Okay, hearing and seeing none. We'll move forward to our approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those? I didn't find any errors this time, so that was great.
My goodness, two for two.
That's, that's pretty awesome. I would entertain a motion. To approve. Second.
Alrighty. Thank you guys. Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell? Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dye?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling? Do we need you for five technically?
I'll just, yes.
Oh, there's Commissioner Pinser. Thank you.
So, so just sit down and let us know if you approve of the minutes. You just gotta say it into the mic real quick.
I did review them and I do approve.
And that was Commissioner Pinser.
Note for the record, she got here at 7:04.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm seeing you become more and more proficient on those minutes. I like it. When we have our first discussion item, who's going to present that?
Um, I will just go ahead and introduce them. Um, we have Gabby and Aiden on from SC Group. Um, we are gonna be discussing three mile plan, um, industrial, and also something that was brought up by, um, a board member today, I'm not sure if several, was maybe discussing not only the housing portion of the industrial, but also discussing, possibly looking at taking off mining in the industrial for the uses. So, just to put that plug in there, SC Group, I didn't really give you that update either, but I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to them, and we'll get it started.
Okay.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Aiden and I are gonna tag team different parts of this. So, Aiden, do you mind doing the screen share piece?
Yeah, sure.
There's actually one thing that Brett, um, you didn't, that we wanted to include and probably start with, is the outline of the plan itself. Did you mention that?
I did not, but go ahead. Sorry.
So, we wanted, before we got much further in the plan writing process, which is gonna be the next couple of months, we wanted to present, um, a framework of sorts to get your feedback, to make sure you thought that things were headed in the right direction as an overall approach to the document. And so, in some ways, it's traditional, in some ways, it's not traditional, so I'll explain that a little bit. Um, and so, similar to the last plan and like a lot of plans, I think the traditional nature is that we're gonna have separate chapters around these topics at the top of this list. So, a chapter around land use, a chapter around economic development, housing. There'll be the downtown plan as its own chapter or own section, and that might be formatted slightly differently. Uh, a chapter around recreation, transportation, arts and culture, utilities, community health and human services, and natural resources and hazards. And so, each of those chapters might be anywhere from three to five pages. Um, but to frame all of that up, the introduction chapter is going to talk about these things in this first section of bullets, so kind of a little bit of the lay of the land of what's happened um, in the last 10 years that have affected the town, the regional context, um, kind of like stressors facing mountain communities in particular. Um, we wanted to also introduce this idea of a shift from sustainability thinking, which drove the 2013 plan to more of a resiliency framework, and walk through the four pillars of resiliency, um, leadership and strategy, health and well-being, economy and society, infrastructure and ecosystems, and really set that up as a framework to look at the entire plan through a resiliency lens. So, try to connect at least one goal and set of actions within each chapter um, as a goal towards making that area of the town more resilient. So, what would it mean to make the transportation system more resilient? What would it mean to make the economic, the economy more resilient? Um, you get the idea there. And then, have some information around the purpose of the comprehensive plan, how this plan in particular is organized, um, and then ending the introduction, introduction with an overarching vision statement that connects the 10 topical visions that you already have developed. Um, if you remember, we took the envisioned 2030 vision statements, got some feedback on them at our first open house, um, made some tweaks to those vision statements about whether they still resonated around that plan topic. Um, and so, we'll have kind of an overall vision statement that brings those together, and then talk about, you know, what we did over this last year to engage the community and get feedback on the plan. So, just to document the, the process itself a little bit. So, that would be the introduction to the plan. And then, for each chapter, we would have the following format. So, let's take transportation as a example. We would have the transportation vision statement. We would have some high-level, uh, bullet points or discussion around what the current transportation conditions and issues are, a recap of what we heard related to transportation in our engagement work, um, discussion of what the major issues are, and then the set of goals, strategies, and actions, and next steps that help, um, improve the transportation system. Um, so we would basically use this format for all of the planned chapters, um, and we have a slight difference in how we would organize the land use chapter, just because the land use chapter is gonna contain a little bit more direct, uh, well, one, we'd have a future land use map, a three-mile plan, discussion of how those are to be interpreted and used in your day-to-day work as planning commissioners and planning staff, and then, um, some more targeted recommendations around code, um, code suggestions, uh, and zoning suggestions. So, that, that chapter, we're calling out just because it has a little bit of a different purpose, and so, it might, it's gonna look a little bit different. So, that is our plan outline. Um, I would love to hear any feedback or questions. Oh, okay, then, Aiden, you wanna jump in? And discuss the implementation chapter? Sorry, I forgot about that.
Sure, no, you're all good. Um, so, as Gabby mentioned, having the chapter structure follow the more, uh, traditional planned topics, um, that we felt would be really helpful for the way that, uh, that kind of works and is organized. Um, and just with staff capacity right now, making sure that someone doesn't need to read through a 70-page document to find the information they're looking for. So, we will have, let's say, housing information show up in the housing chapter, and then also in the implementation chapter. So, someone can jump to the, uh, goals and actions for housing in the implementation chapter, and they can see the set of short-term, midterm, and long-term actions or policies. And then also, I think, who else they might need to collaborate on that specific goal or policy with. So, we're hoping that that gives some ease of plan navigation without losing the collaboration and interconnectedness between the different planned chapters. Um, and then we will have the engagement summary and the more detailed code audit as appendices as well. So, yeah, um, reactions, questions, considerations. We have some time to discuss.
It looks very detailed.
Well, our goal is to try to keep it under 100 pages.
And what is the?
Maybe not, sorry. Maybe not the appendices.
What is the goal for the timeline of completion for the plan? I, I really appreciate the, um, discussion around sustainability and resilience. I think those are gonna be great guidelines for this commission to help us kind of see if proposals and projects align with, you know, a more formal review of what that's gonna look like in terms of sustainability and resilience, but is there a timeline for that? Readiness, I guess.
Yeah, so I believe our initial timeline is to have the plan draft in late September, early October, um, where that would be the, uh, final engagement opportunity. So, we'll do a plan draft, or sorry, a draft plan presentation, uh, I would say probably mid to late October. And then, November and December would be going through the, I think we might have two rounds of edits, uh, scoped, and then hoping to have adoption by December if all goes well.
Does our new town manager have any feedback that he would like to offer with your previous experience with comp plans? You, you gotta turn on the microphone and speak.
Got it. I think there's been really good work here that you guys have done as you've kind of developed this plan. I think the sections look great, and I like how, um, sustainability is kind of woven through the entire narrative of the plan so far. So, I think that's a really cool thing that's kind of progressive. So, so far, I'm really excited to just read the draft and see what it looks like. I've kind of been working through some of the materials on my own a little bit, just to catch up with you guys.
Great.
A question for the SC Group. Is it deliberate? Um, a focus on sustainability, resiliency is United Nations number 11 goal, to create sustainable and resilient communities.
That is not necessarily where we are pulling that framework from. Um, if you're able to see, are you seeing this Word document now with this table?
Uh, I just see the one that, the one that outlined.
Let me reshare. So, this framework that we're pulling from, uh, was developed by the, it's called the City Resilience Index. And so, you can kind of see how the four main topics, leadership, strategy, health and well-being, economy and society, and infrastructure, have these, um, nested goals that will try to develop goals and policies from. So, it is not related to the UN, uh, but I think that that's a great place to take a look for some more resources to highlight here.
Well, we could also, if it's, we could also connect it to, you know, resiliency more broadly about where, you know, key resiliency goals, global, national, you know, state, we could kind of nest them. That way, we were trying to use a resiliency framework that seemed tangible at the municipal level. Um, but if you desire for us to connect it to the kind of bigger picture, we're happy to do that.
No, not at all. I was just curious if that's where, if that was the genesis or, you know, where you guys were pulling from, so.
Well, I think a lot of sustainability work from 10 years ago is now turning into resiliency work.
Exactly.
Um, and I think there's some new things to bring, kind of like thinking about redundancy of systems. So, for like your water system, for example, if there was a wildfire in the area where your water is stored, like you're pretty vulnerable in that respect. So, like, what can you do to make your water storage system more resilient? Like, do you need to have a storage tank in a different location? You know, things like that to make sure that you're not as vulnerable, and you're more resilient in the face of, you know, some impact on your water supply.
Yeah, and there's even been a lot of pushback, I think, from a sustainable, in some cases, because oftentimes that requires high investment in things that may not be of an immediate, you know, return on investment. So, that's where I like the focus on resiliency, not forgetting about sustainability, but I think resiliency is more, is tangible.
Yep, absolutely.
I, I think, unless there's other questions, I think we're ready for you to go forward with outlining some of these things. Uh, I'm curious to see how many goals we end up having. Sometimes we can get a plan that is not really achievable if we have 25 goals.
Right. I, I would be curious though, like, I don't, I agree, I don't wanna over make more goals just to make more goals. Um, so if there's only one or two goals for a particular topic, like, maybe that's just how it is. But maybe, uh, when, when we're getting close to the draft being finalized, I wonder if it would be good to come back to this group and have some kind of prioritization exercise to decide which goals or which actions you think are the most important to complete, you know, first, or are more immediate, or need more attention, or something like that. Because I think it is overwhelming for a small municipality to take a new plan and say, oh, my goodness, there's so much in here. Where do I even begin? So, that's a helpful exercise. Um, we're happy to, happy to do that. We, we're working on that with some, in some other communities right now as well.
I think that would be great. I think it would be nice to, to see that and, and to, you know, get feedback from, you know, several, at least from, uh, the BOT and from us. And how's your public engagement been going on, on that? Have you been getting good feedback through those forums?
Yep, yep. So, I would say, especially on the visioning side of this, we got good community engagement, and it got a little bit more narrow when we got to like the downtown sub-area. So, people were able to give very tangible feedback on that. Um, I do think that this, the next opportunity with the draft plan, we'll wanna make sure that we're getting, we're getting it in a in a format that people can easily chew through and give feedback. So, we'll work with this group and with BOT and Peter, uh, to make sure that people are able to provide great feedback, uh, on the draft plan and not just be drowning in material. Um, so, yeah, more opportunities for that to come, but it sounds like the boards are a great place to start.
Something I would add there, and maybe Jonathan, this is something to coordinate. The BOT is going to be going into their strategic planning in the next probably month or so, because it has to coordinate with, uh, budget. Like, you know, what are we gonna prioritize? And so, you know, even if we go, um, through this process with the other boards, I think it might, because of timing, it might be helpful to also do it in parallel with the BOT, um, as a part of their strategic planning. So, I mean, I don't know if you were planning on hitting all the boards before coming to the BOT. It just, I guess it just kind of depends, because I, I think you said your draft won't be done until September, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so. And we're even trying to wrap things up by then from, you know.
Or maybe the, maybe the BOT strategic plan, strategic planning can, can help with the prioritization of the comp plan, because I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of parallels. So, maybe the top, however it's organized, top five priorities, we like kind of look for the closest thing in the comp plan and kind of highlight those as most closely aligned with the strategic plan.
Yeah, i- i- and, you know, open to how that happens, just wanted to flag it coming up very quickly for us. Um, I mean, we really probably should start talking about those goals and here, coming up in August, at the latest September, at least to start the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for flagging. Um, and we'll work with Jonathan as well to try to map out this engagement with staff as well, to make sure it's getting in front of them. But, yeah, more to come on that. Thanks for flagging.
So, th- this is, uh, Vice Chair Reese. So, when you talked about these, you know, the draft plan being September, October, and I missed what it was in late October, you were, there was another step, and then the final plan in the November, December timeframe.
Yep.
What was the second step?
Yeah, that was the draft plan presentation. So, that would represent the final, uh, community engagement side of this.
Okay. So, was, was this, all three of these, were, were you looking at three presentations to the planning commission, or was this mainly gonna be to the BOT?
That's a good question. So, we're on a, agendas, like sort of switching off. Uh, but especially as this gets closer to adoption and draft planning, I think we're open to switching that schedule up if it makes sense. We just wanna make sure people have content to react to. Um, so, I can work with Gabby and Jonathan to try to see when it would make sense to come back to Planning Commission and to start some conversations with BOT. Um, yeah.
Okay. And when would the priority, prioritization, would, would the Planning Commission be involved in that, or is that mainly gonna be laying out the priorities coming from the BOT? And, and which one would that be? Would that be in September, October, or in late Oc- October?
Yeah, Gabby, what do you think on that?
I don't, I think we wanna have like most of the plan written, so maybe more in that October, end of October, and we can decide how to do it, because we have these regular monthly sessions with you, well, every other month. So, one month we're updating the, the board, one month we're with you guys. And so, we could try to do a joint, a joint, um, meeting. We could do a prioritization with you or with them and kind of see if they're the same or not. I, I think we can decide what we think is the most, um, useful way, but it'll probably be in that later October timeframe.
Yep, well, I just wanna comment that it's, um, you know, being on the Planning Commission, I'm not, we just kind of got little hits and pieces here. We really haven't had much, so we, we really do need a draft. And, you know, we need to be able to see it. You know, some of us work where, you know, we like to read, take notes, and actually have, you know, a piece of paper that we can actually kind of talk about and discuss. I mean, even like tonight's discussion, or what, a little bit that we have in front of us, it's kind of hard to get a feel of what we're talking about. Um, and, and it is the Planning Commission's project. So, we have to get through this and, you know, make some recommendations to get it to Board of Trustees. Um, so that, yeah, that's my comment, that the, you know, possibly even a little bit longer in the draft form, so that can be, uh, the Planning Commission, everybody has a chance to maybe a little bit of feedback. Um, and so far, I don't feel like we've really seen any real substantial drafts to be able to give feedback. It's all been kind of vague, um, bigger ideas. And that's just the way I see it, a little bit.
Uh-huh. Yeah, we haven't started yet. We've been doing all the research and the analysis and talking with staff and conducting focus groups, some of which you've participated in, some of which have been more, you know, stakeholders outside of the Planning Commission. So, um, we'll be sure that once we, um, get the drafts going, that maybe we have like a first half, and we go through the first couple of chapters, and we do a second half. I don't know, we'll have to work with, um, Brett and Jonathan to see, you know, what we think the best way to chew through it, because there's no way we're gonna be able to get through an entire document in one meeting. So, um, we'll have to figure out the best way to get through comments and feedback and like that.
Sounds good, even, sure, some chapters, especially like land use and some of the things we'll have here, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, of course. I think that's a great idea to have one or two chapters that come out earlier. Um, and then you can see how the structure is working in practice and provide some feedback before we're, you know, 11 chapters in. So, yeah, thanks for mentioning that.
I'll, I'll say, this is Vice Chair Reese again, I'll say even before that, as you start getting to where you're identifying the goals, if, if you, you know, and you start narrowing them down, I mean, you don't have to actually come to a planning commission for us to be able to provide some feedback. That stuff could get pushed out by email, and some people don't have the time, but other people like Roger love this stuff. And they will dig in, and they will send feedback, and it could be kind of passed around
Perfect.
uh, to us. So, like, if you end up with, okay, here's our first list of, uh, 12 goals, you know, are, are we in the right ballpark, you know, or is there anything we forgot? You know, I, I doubt that's gonna happen, but, uh, you know, some, some of, as we get into the, even the, I'm roughing out, you know, the rough, rough outline, uh, you know, you can start sending some of that stuff through Jonathan and Brett, uh, to us. We'd, we'd love to see it, and I, I'm sure you'd get two or three of us that would provide some feedback.
Yeah, sounds good. I know our code audit is pretty far along, so that seems like that could be an early product.
Especially some stuff like that, where it really has a lot of details, and it will take some digging in to s- to see, uh, to absorb it. It's kind of tough, uh, sometimes when you, you know, you only have, you know, four or five days before the, the meeting, you know, and real life's in the way. Sometimes we don't get a chance to get through everything. So, yeah, I, I agree. Any, any advanced stuff that you, you can send out, you know, it just makes us a little better prepared when it comes to the presentation.
Yep, yep. And I believe, so we can revisit this with Jonathan once we look at the contract a little bit, but I don't think that there is a funding deadline at the end of December. So, I think if review and feedback come before, you know, just sticking to the timeline that we had created back last October, um, we have some flexibility, I believe, as far as the grant and contract goes. So, we will, we're on schedule, we'll maintain that. But I would say if there are periods where we do need to have a little bit more time for review, I believe we can flex.
And I will prepare you for, once we do actually get this, you know, to the point where we have a final draft and it starts getting out there, and some people in the community start seeing it, that is when you will get a lot of feedback, when it's too late, unfortunately. A lot of people don't come when, uh, their opinion can be useful, but they react to, uh, what the, the legwork and groundwork has been. But, um, okay, I, I think that, uh, was there more tonight that you were gonna kind of outline some of this stuff?
Yeah, that would, this is only the first of three things we wanted to talk about.
Okay.
So, this second.
You guys are stuck with us.
No problem. We got an open agenda tonight. You can have the whole night.
You wanna do three-mile plan?
Yeah.
So, if you remember, um, we met with you, I can't remember when that was, when we had, we did a mapping exercise. Um, and we brought our notes back, and then our notes were kind of all messy. We had areas circled, but we couldn't remember exactly what the notes were for each of these areas. So, in order to make sure we captured the end of that discussion, I think we like got cut off for time, and we had to leave or something. I can't remember how it all went.
Yep.
We're gonna go through each of these areas that had been discussed. We had broken out into a couple of different groups, and so we had a couple of different groups' answers, but just wanted to confirm what the emphasis or the thoughts around these different areas that folks circled when we met last time. So, Aiden, how do we wanna do this? Like, start on one side and go clockwise or something?
Yeah, yeah. So, to, on Gabby's point, there are some of these, like, the West Mag Trail area, that I think our immediate opinion would be that that's not appropriate for growth because of the land ownership. But it was circled for some reason, and just so we wanna go through these and make sure that we're saying that we're on the same page for, yes, this is appropriate for these reasons, or no, this is appropriate for whatever other reason. So, I think let's just go, uh, maybe east to west.
Right. And just to frame, frame things up a little bit more, this will help us in the three-mile plan product, which will be in the land use chapter. And the purpose of a three-mile plan is to have at least a little bit, it doesn't have to be that detailed, but desired land uses or desired level of development or growth or protection in the area three miles outside of the municipal border. And so, basically, what happens is if there's any type of annexation agreement, of which is up for debate with Boulder County, that agreement has expired. So, if there's any kind of annexation or development plan for a place within the three-mile area, you know, you already have a quote-unquote "policy" via this map of what your desired, um, desired land use is for the areas within the three-mile. And most of that area is either Boulder County open space or Forest Service lands. So, it's fairly straightforward. There's a couple of areas that we wanna focus on tonight, but most of that area is gonna be some type of like resource protection, open space category. So, with that, do you wanna go move forward?
Yeah.
Yes, please, please continue.
So, Aiden, if you're manning the mouse, we can just point to one.
Yeah.
Start somewhere.
Um, let's start with the one outside of the three-mile boundary.
So, what's that subdivision called, or that area called? Is there a name for that?
I do not know the name of it. The one that's up in the upper right-hand side?
Yeah, where, where she just put her purple comment box.
Yeah, sorry, you guys have a hard time seeing.
I don't know how big our screen is. Can you see us really big, or can you see us small?
It's on the small TVs that we have in the room, and only one is working.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, but I think most of us have it pulled up on our laptops.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Yes, yes, we can. Yes, yes, we can see it.
I got kicked off.
Can I inter?
You can help. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, it's outside of the three mile plan. We don't even, it's not identified. It's not a subdivision. I mean, I, I don't think we ought to just take it off the map and not talk about it. It's
Sure.
Does anybody even know what that is?
I don't know, Roger, were you the one that circled it?
I, I, I remember this being identified and I remember thinking it was extremely far.
Let's just take it off then. Not into three miles.
Because it just isn't going to happen.
Okay, love it.
Definitely do like a thumbs up, thumbs down for all of these and zip on through.
There we go.
Yeah.
Thumbs down on that one, just.
We can't, we can't see you, but.
It'd be pretty.
I can tell you guys.
Okay. Want to go move to St. Anton Highlands? What's the, what was the thinking around St. Anton Highlands subdivision?
That wasn't one of the ones I identified, but I believe it was mainly because it was a population group. I think that there was some of the folks that looked at that as where there was a cluster of homes that that might be a potential for residents to get together and say they'd like to be annexed into town.
Right. They're not that close to town, so I think annexation would be a little problematic, unlike a place like Whispering Pines or Beaver Valley Estates that are contiguous, contiguous. But I think these larger subdivisions that are already fairly well established, like maybe they get some kind of suburban residential or some other, you know, residential cluster or something like that. Some kind of land use designation that just recognizes it as a kind of ex-urban subdivision of some kind.
So would it need to be bordering current town boundaries? I, I thought that that was part of the annexation criteria.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not appropriate at all then?
I don't think, yeah, that's, I think it's too far away for.
And if, if you want, you would need to draw a boundary that does connect to town.
I, I see.
Just to jump in here, just really quick, you can do what's called flagpole annexations. And that would allow you to annex property that's not actually, that doesn't look contiguous with the town's boundaries. Those are complicated annexations and essentially what you do is you, you annex the right of way to get to your property. But like I said, those are complicated.
I know, I, I know those are technically allowed, but like they're pretty frowned upon and they're like, I don't know why. Like what would be an extenuating circumstance where an subdivision far from town would even want to be annexed in? I mean, I think the, the carrot here is potentially water and wastewater services to have, have that available. But this one we're talking about is so far away, like extending those services over there is probably unlikely.
Right.
And is there a distance on the flagpole in terms of how long your pole can be? I can't remember.
There isn't, but you have to have contiguity. The one-six contiguity, you have to develop that contiguity to get to your, to your subdivision. So
Okay.
You know, you have the one-six contiguity for your one annexation that's connected to the boundary and then you, you build one-six contiguity for your next flagpole. And so it's, it, it's several annexations to get to the property. I would say the other thing to think about related to these parcels is not just the desires of those, of those parcels and, and what the residents might want. But more importantly, I think is what is a benefit to the town for annexing in this property?
Right.
So this is Commissioner Di. I was trying to recall my thought process when I was looking at these maps last time. And I, I think like all of the outliers, the Highlands, Cold Springs, Caribou City, one of the bottom right. I like all of those because they were not contiguous. I'm pretty sure that I marked them as just maybe for the following plan, but not, not right now. And mark them as not appropriate.
Right. But they still could get a category, like I think we're going to give them a category of like existing residential.
Right.
Or, you know, we're going to give them some kind of land use category to recognize that there's already development in those areas.
Right. Can I interject? This is Roger. Taking what Mike just said and certainly the attorney, I believe. I, yes, when I saw this, you know, my thoughts were that it almost seems like we're going, you know, kind of backwards, letting the carriage lead the horse. I feel very strongly that what we just had said about, they should be property that are contiguous with town that are reasonable, even more than that, that what I hope that the comp plan would, would show is a, a, a a standard or a pathway that describes these are needs of the town. And these are parcels that would actually make our town and community better. Not the, the other way around where, well, here's some people that, you know, that have, you know, their beach fields are failing or they have a reason on their side that, oh, can we please annex so they can certainly petition? But I, I hope that we would have a document that would describe a good pathway, a good document to show how a area would apply and give standards that can be looked at and we have this whole process of annexation through a vote of the people in that whole process. So I think what our three mile plan needs to show is, you know, how would that foundation be initiated? How would we get started on that process? And it should be with the town as the foundation and, and the format of how would someone, a developer or a community apply to, to become part of the town. So I, you know, it seems like a little bit of the original, how we got that day where people were just like shooting darts at a, at a, at a dartboard and that's how we got Caribou City and Rollinsville. And the idea that, I mean, the way I thought about it is a bit thick this week is that theoretically, it really is a one mile plan. Because it really should be properties that are contiguous. And as you had mentioned right in the introduction, it's, we're surrounded by, you know, county, county preserve and, and national forests. So the, the actual properties that could actually petition to be annexed are very few. Especially if we're looking at the ones that are adjacent to the town borders.
That's a good point, Roger. I like that thinking about.
I like the rest of the, maybe the commission actually even get a little feedback. So that we could kind of cut to, you know, instead of just going on about what do we all feel about to let you know if, if this is really a consensus. Like I've got this from Mike's opinion too, just from what he said.
So Commissioner Penzenner has a question for Roger and/or possibly the group. But when we talk about annexation with regard to areas that could contribute and align with the town's goals, what criteria are we talking about? What are some of the things that would lend toward seeing a mutual exchange or a mutual benefit in annexation?
Yeah, no, I think that's important. And one thing that I might want some help on from, from Jonathan or whoever else is like one calculation that would be helpful to understand is like if, if a neighborhood were to be annexed and start paying town property taxes and people would be allowed to vote in town elections and different things that are now on county zoning standards, they would now be subject to town zoning standards. You know, those are all the changes that would take place. And so kind of like, what is that cost benefit of something like that happening, especially from, like there would be a cost extend utilities, but is there a benefit in terms of tax revenue or other things like that? If a neighborhood were to be annexed into the town, I don't really feel like I have enough understanding of, of town, of the town finances to know whether that would be a net benefit or net cost.
There's probably some various specific criteria you could look at in that regard. And one example might be utilities again. We all know that we have very limited properties sharing in the utility costs, which is a taper fund essentially. So we have to make sure that that's run like an enterprise, right? We have to make sure revenues match expenditures. So when we have increasing costs in our utilities, that is a cost that needs to be shared by all the people who are on the system. So if you have more people on the system, potentially it could protect against significant increases in utility rates to other people. But that's something that we'd have to manage very carefully about, you know, in regard to water rights and things like that too. But there could be tangible benefits to residents of the town from annexing certain places. And typically the criteria that you look at are what are the impact on the town? What costs would the town incur by making this annexation? But that would be a process that you typically go through in that annexation and have criteria like any kind of quasi judicial decision that you'd make.
Thank you. That sounds great.
Why, why don't we go, why, why don't we change up how we're doing this? And let's go the other way. Let's reverse how we're doing this and go with the most likely parcels and then, and go from there. Cause I, I think there's probably three or four. And I was here when we did that exercise and I can tell you, I think it might've been a misunderstanding in how we were doing it. I thought it was more of a brainstorming exercise on any future potential community that could be, you know, I, I look at some of these ones that are too far outside of town area and, and let me know, but I don't know that everybody got that. So I think you ended up with maybe different people having different understandings of what we were looking like. I, I think that we know for a fact that the, I don't know the name of the, of the parcel, but Kayla's the most anxious to be annexed into town. And it's the one that's right there next to the West Magnolia Trails area. Is that right?
To the left of it or to the north of it?
Right there where you got your, your, right there.
Along the, along the road to Eldora?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well. What are you calling that from area?
I think it's called Toon something.
I, I can't remember. They actually have a name for, for the potential development area, but I just will have to call it Kayla's property.
The person that owns it?
Arapaho Ranch is the area.
Okay.
Yeah. What, Arapaho Ranch? Yeah, let's, let's go with that. Arapaho Ranch area. Property.
Okay. Yeah, it's a potential developable space. And would you think that's appropriate as residential, mixed use, like commercial along the highway, residential behind it? What do you, what do you think is appropriate? Appropriate land use there?
Residential currently is, is what she's looking at developing and she's had about a 10 year push to try and, you know, make that plan go forward. And so I, I'm sure she will be the first person that will be, once we have this process ironed out and the application and the criteria and the chapter on annexation, everything all written. But you know, there's a few pitfalls she has to do, but that by far would be the most likely of, of any of these right now. I haven't heard a lot of interest from any or, or any interest. One other area, the Sundance area that's just to the north of the West Magnolia Trail. That was the only other, that one right there. So those are the only two properties that are outside of town that are contiguous with town where there's been any desire and, and one of them has great desire and one of them was just in passing. What would it take for us to get in? That's the Sundance one. But those two, I would say would be the most likely in the next, in the period that this comp plan covers to be a possibility.
So let me jump in here before we move too far along. So the Arapaho Ranch area, thinking back to the exercise, I thought it should be divided into at least two sub areas. There's kind of the, I guess the Oblong rectangle on the far east side, south of the highway. I believe that's the area that Kayla is considering developing and owning. I could be wrong about that. But I thought, so that would be appropriate for development residential perhaps. But on the other side of the highway, I do not think it's actually suitable for development at all.
North side of the highway, is it kind of a flood plain?
Yeah, it's a flood plain, it's wetland, it's wildlife corridor. That's also just my opinion. But I think it should be multiple areas within there.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
That's where the water access easement is, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think it's even more though, so that it, it's all those things that Mike said, but it's even more so that I believe that, you know, the owners have no desire to be annexed is really the bigger issue. But yeah, but we could just leave it at that.
Right. We're not forcing them to be annexed. We're just identifying on the town's behalf what the future land use designation should be in the town's best interest. I mean, if the owner wants to go through a county process or a town process, I mean, that's kind of.
To the south of that highway. Mike exactly right.
Yes, we, we, I've had so many conversations with town residents. Every time this comes up or there's a story in the paper at church, I have several people that want to know about the town's land grab plans. And I have to explain to them how we can't initiate annexation. It has to be initiated by the property owners. You know, but it kind of falls on deaf ears. There's, there's this fear that the ski developer people and money grubbers are going to come in and gobble up all the town outside of land and start building condos or something. I don't know.
And that it's a change in taxation, not ownership.
Yeah, right.
Let's get.
Well, thank you for your public service in that educating people.
All right. But thi- this is Roger again. So what Jim left off, there, there's actually three, three, there's two little triangles or squares there on the south of the town. So the one actually is where the switchbacks are. There's a lot of residential there. And, and then you're right, then the other one is the Sundance area is appropriate. And there's one little square there to the north, which would be appropriate to, that, that's right there.
Yep. You got your, you got it right on.
Road.
There you go.
And.
So, so I was wrong that the Sundance is actually the one that's just a little to the right of the West Magnolia Trail, right there.
Yep. So there's actually, there would be three on the south and there would be one there on the north. And certainly Mud Lake is not, should not be there.
Is that this one?
Yeah, that's, and, and the Beaver Valley Estates and Whispering Pines we should talk about. But then the one to the, where it says Beaver Valley Estates to the west of that northwest. I mean, that, that's actually five points. I mean, that's way out there. Does anybody feel like that's appropriate to actually be, you know, as a potential annexation?
Well, I think, I think that's probably meets the definition of something that we would be discussed though. You know, I mean, this is, this is a 10 year plan we're talking about, right? So I, I, I think that we don't want to eliminate anything. You know, it would be very difficult. And you know, as somebody who lives in Big Springs and doesn't have sewer service, there's people in town, just because you get annexed, doesn't mean you immediately get sewer and water services. You know, so there, there's, you know, a potential that, you know, maybe, you know, down the line, that group of citizens gets together and says, hey, we, we'd just like to be part of town. So we could be able to vote in the elections and have a say so in what's going on in our community. But you know, we know that there's no imminent or even in the, you know, next five to 10 years, infrastructure that's going to be run out here. So I, I would hesitate to, to eliminate something that is, that borders town right there.
Fine. And the same thing with, so I guess it can't be the same with Whispering Pines. Although every time we've had this discussion, we've ended up like, like you said, with a good part of the residents coming here and saying, what in the world you're doing? We certainly had that with Ridge Road and with the Beaver Valley Estates, you know, two years ago when, when they even talked about that.
And I remember how many times we told them that they would have to initiate the annexation process, but you know, people hear what they want to hear. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I was going to say, one other benefit you might want to consider for areas to annex is your criteria say that an annexed property conveys water property or water rights to the town if they have it, if there's groundwater rights. And so that could be another reason why you would want to annex a property, maybe even on a flagpole potentially. So I'm just throwing that out there just as a, keep it in your head.
Wait, so the, Tommy, can you make sure, I want to make sure I understand how that works. If there, a property were to be to annex, the water rights go directly to the town?
That's part of what the criteria say. That's part of what the criteria say.
Well, and then that kind of brings in other reasons why you might want to annex a piece of land such as like utilities to be self sustaining from a utility standpoint or something like that. And so, yeah, not always just numbers and residential.
This is Commissioner Glasser, and I feel that the public and the residents need to have the education and a little more knowledge as to how they can do the process to get the annexation across. And know that it's not us making the decision, they're starting the initiative. So I think just the education on that would be part of the plan so that it's there and it's, you can have access to it. You can read it. And maybe that will stop some of the confusion.
Maybe we can paraphrase how the process works and cite the code or cite a state statute or whatever we need to cite to like bring all of it together in a. What?
This, this sounds like something maybe our public outreach manager in town, maybe we could come up with a, a here are criteria, here's a small bullet point thing and a story in the paper. And once we get through this, once we, you know, get something down there. But, but honestly, you know, the best, you know, like Commissioner Glasser said, is education. And, and you know, if we can put it out on social media, what, you know, I'm not saying now, I'm saying like down the line. And, and a story in the paper, it seems like that reaches the most, you know, the largest audience in town. But right up front, the bullet number one, all annexation is initiated by existing property owners, you know, not the town.
I like the idea of like a PowerPoint slide that could then be used either for the website. It could also be put on social media. You could use, you know, just one clean slide that sort of highlights the process. And then we sort of circulate that. And I'm also happy to help with that if I can.
This is Britt. Yeah, so currently how, when someone comes for annexation, and I, I can say I've gotten about five in the past couple of months. So it, I'll have to, I, I won't send you the specific details, but I can send you general areas. I just have to be digging. We educate them, we set a meeting, we kind of explain how it works because that educational piece is not there. It's kind of lengthy to get through even through code. But I think it's something probably, again, like Vice Chair Reese was saying, that town staff and Peter, our engagement manager could probably do, we're kind of figuring that out along the way. There are some of these educational pieces that just need to go out. And I think annexation would be, you know, a good one just to get out there. And maybe that doesn't come from the comp, comp plan. Maybe that's more of a town staff educational piece to simplify it because it's very lengthy and it takes quite a bit even to just have a, like a WebEx meeting with someone. But there are people that are, are definitely interested to see benefit from it, so.
That would be fantastic. Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, can I just jump in on a, a legal issue related to annexations? It's really critical that everybody understands and is, you know, super important. And I think people might confuse annexation with other processes, but annexation is a legislative decision that is made by the, the governing body, the Board of Trustees makes the decision. So it, it really is, you know, the board can say yes or no on annexation, even if maybe the application for annexation meets all of the checkpoints, everything that's required, the board can ultimately say no. So that's a, a really key point, that it is a legislative decision.
And so if, if that were to happen, let's just play this out for a second because I have a follow up question to that. If the, and let's say a neighborhood or a property owner wanted to annex in, board said no, could there be, if there were enough signatures from town residents, could there be a referendum of some kind to override that or no? That decision? I'm just thinking about what just happened in Steamboat with the Brown Ranch affordable housing thing. They approved the annexation and then there was a referendum and they got enough signatures and it passed to, and then there was a, a citywide vote and they voted to rescind the annexation.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that was, that was the opposite way of of what your, your question is, where the voter said, no, we don't want to approve it. And town meddling code already has an election process written into the town code, which is pretty unique for a statutory municipality to have an election process for annexations. I would say it would be extremely unlikely for there to be a referendum on, on an ordinance denying an annexation. But you're asking a great question. I think the answer might be yes.
I don't want to rule anything out. Just wanted to know like a what, a what if scenario.
Yeah, no, I, I, so I think just off the top of my head, I would say yes, that could possibly go then to an election.
But that's helpful. Thank you for reminding us that the role of the BOT in all of this.
The reason why there is a vote, though, is because we basically thought there was a 99% chance it was going to go to a referendum anyway. So why not just build it into the process and just have it go strictly, directly to a vote?
Exactly, Nicole. And, and, and because that was the standard for 20 years, so the town wanted to have a vote. So I, I think to summarize, if we could, maybe, you know, there's what, what? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those properties that are adjacent to the town. If we'd actually make that into the three mile plan and if we could parlay that along with what Britt was saying about having criteria and also our administrator talking about some pass that we would be, you know, minimum requirement, water, all those things. So we actually had to work on kind of a checklist of that applicants would know. Well, here's going to be some of the things that they need to bring to the table. And I, I think those, those adjacent properties are appropriate. And, but then we need to just work on, as we identified, I was pretty certain that was the way it was, that we had to have an election. And identify, you know, some criteria that an applicant would actually bring the application, bring to the town, rather than going through the process and saying, well, people come up and start asking, what about this? What about this? And have it all in a format that it's understood. And that would be good for the town and the community and for applicants.
Britt, do you, do you already have a criteria right now? Because you said you've been talking to people. You already have?
So it was the last board created, or not created, but there was, honestly, I haven't had one in a while. Yeah, I just, personally, I just go to town code. There's, there is a list of criteria. I just try to simplify it in the words that make more sense to someone who has an interest in annexation. And just tell them, you know, just kind of give them the past experience with annexation and that's really it.
It's in section 1529, that criteria.
And I agree with Roger. I think that every, of, all the bordering properties minus Mud Lake would be something that could be possible for us to look at. You know, but again, what we don't want to do is have this somehow be a document that gets out to the public. And it's not, and somehow it's misunderstood as this is all the areas that the town wants the annex at some point in the future. What, what we need to do is somehow have it labeled, even the map itself, like a call out box on the side that says something to that degree. These are potential annex, future annexations should the property owners have a desire to initiate the process or some. I, I mean, I don't know how the wording would be. You, uh, smart people could get together and figure out something good with a lawyer that keeps us out of trouble. But I, I, I would say even the map itself needs to have some kind of a call out box on it that says, you know, these are not identified for a land grab, you know, th- these are areas, you know, that would be appropriate, you know. And then, you know, should they meet the criteria and be a benefit of the town? And that, and a simplified version of, you know, here's the, here's the eight criteria that we will consider for somebody, you know, first, you know, you have to have, as I remember from the training, it was going to be, okay, you have to have a majority of property owners that get together and agree, you know, that, that are, you know, that they want to do that. You know, and then you put in your application, you know, and, and here's, you know, all the things that are required. And still, it's going to require the BOT to approve it and a public vote to approve it. So, so there's nobody who's gonna, you know, I would love to.
I see a nice flow chart. PowerPoint presentation of just how it works.
Yeah, yeah, a, a, and a potential timeline on what that would take. I would guess some kind of process like that's going to take a year to two years to, to work through before we, you know, I, I mean, from the time that, you know, two or three neighbors get together and start saying, hey, we'd like to do this, and the time that something could go to a referendum vote and possibly be voted on, it's not going to happen, you know, in six months. So, but I, I agree that anything that is beyond what those, those seven properties are that are bordering town minus Mud Lake, I, I think is probably something that is, is out of the consideration even in the next 10 year period. That's my two cents.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I think the other thing that, you know, we'll try to set this, I don't, I can't promise that we're going to do all of that in just the comp plan, but I think we'll set the stage for it through the three mile plan and some goals and actions and policies related to annexation. But it sounds like you might be asking for more about annexation education and annexation policy just being a little bit more understood by your constituents. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that, you know, there's an expired, I think it's an IGA or expired agreement with Boulder County where Boulder County basically didn't want, they need, they wanted to agree or disagree to any annexation and that has expired. So I guess one thing I'm wondering is what's, I'm assuming you want as the town autonomy over deciding your own annexation decisions. And obviously Boulder County is, is, can give feedback and comment to that, but I don't think you want them being able to say yes or no, like the previous, my understanding of the previous agreement. Is that correct?
That is still up for negotiation. We are still open to negotiating a new IGA. And if they would like to have thoughts and input on our annexation, then we'll also be asking for some other things that we need from Boulder County. So.
A little this for that.
Such as? What are your, what would your asks be?
There's all kinds of things that are on the, you know, the, the table or, you know, things that residents have asked for in the past, whether that's, you know, upkeep of trails or better transportation up from Boulder or let's get sidewalks going to the high school. You know, there's any number of things that we could potentially ask for.
That will preclude you from continuing with that negotiation.
This is Roger. One final comment, as opposed to, as you just mentioned, trying to explain the whole annexation process to comp plan is not the thing. But if this three mile plan, this picture of this map is actually in the comp plan, maybe a paragraph kind of describing that these are the properties potentially could be annexed and, you know, and just explain that this doesn't mean they're going to be annexed. But that would be right there, part of that map would be the opportunity to explain what it is in the comp. And it would take a paragraph or two.
Right, I think a, an explanation, a narrative that accompanies the three mile plan, and then a goal related to annexation policy. I think that should do the trick.
Right, and it's, you know, and say it's state statute, it needs to be done every year. So that, that would help explain what it is. Yes, it needs to be updated every year.
Nobody updates their three mile plan every year, but you are right. A lot of people just, they're like, oh, it's a year, let's rubber stamp our old one, have, you know, or have a meeting discussing changes. But a lot of people keep on rubber stamping old three mile plans year after year until they get to a comp plan process 10 years down the road. And they're like, okay, now we're going to have the discussion about changes.
Gabby, quick question on process here. Some of these don't, some of these like polygons don't exactly follow parcel lines. Will we need to have a more refined map product with the PC reviews that follows parcel lines?
You can do it. I've seen them a lot of ways. There's one, you can have follow parcel lines, you can have it be these bubbles. I think having it follow parcel lines is helpful. So if there is a particular property that wants to see what category they're in, they're not like part of a bubble and maybe half in one category and half in another category. But there's no rules around what your three mile plan has to say or how to, how it has to be written. Do we, are you ready to move on to the third topic?
I, I just, we just remembered something over the side of the table. So instead of it being, what's the ranch?
Arapaho Ranch.
Arapaho Ranch. The, the subject that was up for annexation is Bobcat Ridge.
Which one is Bobcat Ridge?
Well, that was the one they talked about, just south of the highway, Eldora Highway 130, the one that we talked about first. So if you give it that name, everybody would know what it is.
Okay, cool.
But yeah, are we okay to move on? All right, let's, let's do that.
Third topic, industrial category.
So for this one, I think we would like to hear like a five to seven minute overview of some of your conversations and potential concerns or opportunities that you've talked about with the, with the existing industrial zone. I think from what our understanding is, is whether or not we want to rezone the whole thing, whether or not we want to rezone partial parts of it and whether or not we want to allow residential uses. That's my, I think that's our broad understanding on the background.
Right, or just change the use, like you have one big spot that is currently zoned industrial. So in this comp plan, and we want to make recommendations around should it all remain industrial and maybe you want to update the uses with, that allowed in that zone? Do you think part of it should not be industrial anymore and you want to explore a different land use or a different zoning designation as a potential recommendation? Or kind of somewhere in between, you know, we want these uses allowed in this part, these uses not allowed in this part, et cetera. We did, Aiden, is it worth throwing up that little analysis, that thing we did about which uses are only an industrial?
While you guys are getting that up, this is Britt. I did just want to make a note that we do have a property owner here. So eventually opening up to public comment on this industrial, I think would be great. Discussing the use of mining and industrial came up. And I know that wasn't something you guys had on this, but I think maybe if there is appetite for discussion after this housing portion, we should add on to that.
So we just did, yeah, so let me just introduce this and then I want to hear from everybody else is we did a little quick review just to get our heads wrapped around about what was allowed in industrial. And there's three uses where there, these are the only places they're allowed in the entire town.
Your list is, the mixed uses is no longer allowed. Just let you know.
Mixed uses no longer allowed in industrial?
Um, no, there was the ordinance update with the housing study and sorry.
You must have been looking at, looking at an old version then.
Yeah, you're, it's, that's what it states on our municipal code. It hasn't been updated yet. I'm sorry, I should have sent you that.
That's okay.
But what it states here, hold on, sorry, just pulling it up, is it no longer allows nursing, I think nursing home was on there, or family care center, one of them, and mixed uses.
Because you eliminated those two from being allowed. Because you eliminated those two from being allowed.
Yeah, so family care, mixed uses, and I feel like there was like retirement or nursing, one of those was on there as well. Um, that is no longer allowed as well. I don't, I don't know why, uh, it was just something that was decided in the housing study. And that's it. Sorry.
Mixed uses is so broad though. That's like, that's an interesting one.
Yes.
So this list is all the stuff that's allowed, but it's also allowed in at least one other zone, but the top three sexually oriented businesses. And then warehousing and manufacturing facilities. Those are right now the only. Things allowed or sorry, the things where that this is the only place where they're allowed. And so if you were to, for example, to get rid of this industrial zone or part of that, you wouldn't have those uses have a home. Anywhere. Um, so just wanted to bring that up. There are some pros and cons to allowing. Housing in industrial zones. Um, there's like new potential nuisances. Right now your industrial zone isn't particularly. Used for heavily, heavy industry. So I could see the appeal. The other thing that has happened in some communities where housing has been allowed in industrial zones. Is the demand for housing is so high that it has inflated the property values. Of any, anything where housing is a, is allowed. And then you might get a flood of housing. I mean, there, you, you're a small community. There aren't that many parcels owned industrially. But in other communities where some form of housing. Has been allowed in industrial zone, it's, it's made the, those property values like double overnight because the desire to build housing is just so strong right now. So there's kind of a little bit of a caveat there of like whether you really want to go down that path.
Can I, I, I'd like to interject before we get too far down the line. I, I, I guess I saw this discussion, I even questioned. Why we're having this discussion is it, I've asked the question, this is appropriate. To be trying to work this out through a comp plan process. Uh, you know, this is like rezoning and kind of looking at the zoning map. If the same situation had come up where, you know, a property owner pass on also and there's available. And, and then a crisis with a fire, but. You know, if we were going to do this through the complan, say this had happened in 2015, we weren't going to wait 10 years for the next complan update. To try to do this. I mean, I think this is actually. You know, this is actually a task that needs to be. You know, actually decided and be working on ordinance to see how we want to do this, just as we. Kind of changed what, what's appropriate, like we just, like you said, you just did. So that process. So I mean, I, maybe I'd make it simpler for this committee, the cop fan people. I just like a little feedback, but I don't know if this is the where we should really be working on this, that we should actually have this on the agenda and get it done.
Can I clarify this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Last meeting, we had Jesse Severs come, or you know, that proposal to potentially rezone. Part of the industrial zone. And so that is a conversation that is supposed to be happening within the planning commission, like do, what do we want to allow?
I agree, but not at the comp plan.
But the comp plan folks, um, what I'm particularly interested in is your evaluation to date. You've gone through a code audit, you've gone through some of this zoning, you've assessed. What percentage of our, you know, what we have from an economic development standpoint for, you know, light industrial. And so I, I'm personally interested in your consultation. If you were recommend, making a recommendation, what would that recommendation be so that then we can have? That conversation about a particular ordinance or whatnot.
But we're going to wait till January to do that and we can be doing it in September.
No, why would we wait?
While they're talking about the comp plan process.
But they have information right now.
Well, fine.
Yeah, if they have information right now and they've done some of this analysis, why not hear it from them now so that that can inform how we make a decision?
I don't disagree that. Let's get their analysis and work on it in September to make this, this, all I'm saying, this should be separate. We can team, team together, but we don't want to wait, you know, for the end of the car plan to be able to. You know, decide what to do about those properties.
Yeah.
And they need to be decided last, it could have been a couple of weeks ago.
I, I, I guess it can make this really easy. Um, S E group, what would be your recommendation at this point in time?
So I think the way I would approach it is that we want to have some goal or goal around industrial. Uses in the comp plan. Um, I think my initial analysis and initial look is that I think you don't. Like your industrial area is fairly underutilized in terms of. Actually being used for industrial purposes. Um, and although you, I think it's important to have a small amount of industrial area so that you, back to our resiliency. You know, you have the ability to um, have businesses that are making things or having warehousing space or having space that are supporting businesses or. Whatever it is. I don't think you need all of your area that's currently zoned. Industrial to be industrial, but I think keeping the most important. Art as industrial, um, I think would be important, but if there's a. Section of the currently industrial zoned. Industrially zoned area that has. You know, is, is adjacent to neighborhoods, has good road access. Is not a steep slope, not in a wetland, you know, good developable land. Converting a portion of that to housing with just how much housing is needed, I think is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Cause that's kind of what I was looking for is, you know, up to date, you know, your guys, your all of analysis because you've been looking at all of the parcels. And I think that we take that piece of information in conjunction with. Some of the private developers that are wanting to develop housing versus some of the public land. I know that you're going to, Brett, you're going to be doing a presentation soon. Just so that we can look at all the options. So thank you. Yeah. And you're right. We haven't had a plan up to date on how to actually utilize that industrial. Zone, right? And so that would also be something.
Yeah.
I think that we have to strategically carve out for.
Yeah. And, and you know, we've worked a lot on mountain communities and mountain communities are not particularly desirable places. Like cost of doing business is really high. So unless it's a business that is situated in Netherlands because it's serving the Netherlands community or is like. Storing snowplows or directly serving like the needs. Of your region as a, like, you're not going to get some random business. It's like. Netherlands is a great place to buy a warehouse and start my. Manufacturing business, you know, they're going to pick some cheap land like east of Denver by an hour. You know, so like, I think you just have to be strategic around. You know, how to use the limited. Land that you have in your municipal area. And just be more thoughtful about, about that.
Yeah. And we've, you know, even Jonathan's had some, some creative ideas in terms of how we could explore that. Just a couple of, that you rattled off to me.
Yeah, there's, I think that the recreation industry, there's opportunities to bring some of those folks up here. There's also some big distilleries looking for new homes, which might be appropriate for those parcels. So I think from an economic development perspective, light industrial and. Is really the play there potentially, I think. But again, that's just my like 10,000 foot view.
Yeah, I think recreation related businesses, um, yeah, I think those are all great ideas.
So this is Vice Chair Reese again. So from what you were saying, it sounded like you're telling us. And, and we're acknowledging there hasn't been a lot of outreach or recruitment to try and bring industry into our industrial zone. But it sounded like we all know that housing is, is probably our number one priority and need in town. That you're suggesting maybe we could look at rezoning portions of it that might be appropriate for housing. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. And I would love like, while we're working on the. Plan, if you could spend one of your next meetings, like. You tell us like, because we're going to have a future land use map, which will. Highlight areas, you know, potentially we could call areas of change, you know, areas where we think. The zoning should potentially change or areas where the land uses should change. And I would love to hear like which areas. Of the industrial zone, you think should stay industrial and which areas you think are potentially appropriate for some kind of other development.
That's excellent. I, 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 I like that. Uh, I, I wonder, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a, a time when it would be best to let our audience member be able. Did you have some, some public comment you wanted to? Perhaps, are we at a, a point where we could hear from him right now?
Sure. Sounds good to me.
I'm sorry.
We might also have somebody online that would like to make a public comment.
Why, why don't we open this up to public comment? We'll start, uh, just so we could at least take their feedback and hear what they're thinking. We'll start here in the room. If you'll get up and, uh, give us your name and your address and you will have three minutes. Just, just hit the button right there on the, there you go.
Okay. My name's Jim Haug and I live on Wolf tongue court. Which is one of the four remaining residences on Wolf tongue court in the industrial zone. We, I've lived there, we've lived there, we've owned this property for 30 years. And my wife's grandfather lived there 35 years before that. So.
Can you tell us the specific number, address of the, of the property?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. Okay, thank you.
And Ken, I, I just kind of want to know where the wind is blowing here for our future. You know, your industrial zone is all one property. It's owned by one person. Which is kind of interesting in terms of what your plans might be. Uh, one of, one of the things of. That we're interested in is, you know, is there going to be residential use or not? Uh, we're, we're there, but. Uh, and I don't see any particular value in it being residential or being industrial from our point of view, because we're kind of. Grandfathered in there. The one thing that you. You guys are all aware of this too, is your industrial zone is going to be sold. Uh, it's going to be on the market here in the next. Whatever year or two probably. So that's going to make a big difference about who buys that. Hopefully you guys will. Uh, but if, you know, that's bought by commercial people or developers or whatever, that's going to be. A really different scenario than perhaps even what you're outlining here. Unless you can limit it to whatever you want to limit it to. I don't know. I just kind of want to know what you guys are kind of up to and what you're planning.
What are we up to?
We're figuring it out together.
So I have a question. Is, is the industrial zone, are all one parcel? So is your house on somebody else's parcel or are you on your own parcel?
The, the five residences that were carved out of this industrial zone are all, have their own deeds and everything. But we are totally surrounded by industrial zoning. All of those houses are, none of them.
Those little, those little in hold, those little squares are inside.
Yes, they're, they're all inside the industrial zone. There is no property that is adjacent to residential or commercial.
And do you have, um, do you have communication with the other residents there? Do you have a sense of what the residents desire in terms of the potential impact?
Uh, well, we're all kind of interested in that, that the scenario is there are five, there were five houses. One of them is a derelict now, as you know, the one that's burned out. Uh, the next one is a long-term rental house. The next one is a V R B O, short-term rental. Uh, the fourth one is, um. Mark Myerton, who owns the property along with his sisters at the moment. And then there is our property. So there are four residences there, but only two permanent ones.
It sounds like you have a little more information than we do. I had not heard that that was going to be coming on the market. Do you have some information from the owners on, on? They're, they're just looking to sell out and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We do have, excuse me, we do have one of the owners online right now.
Oh.
And so, um, we could probably ask for her perspective too.
Ah, good.
This is Greta, uh, one of Mark's sisters. And to my knowledge, there is no. Immediate. Listing of the property. We have been looking at. How to clean it up for the better community use. So Jim, we've met before. It's probably been a little while. And to my knowledge, there is no immediate plan to sell out to some. High profitable housing.
Good.
My, my personal view has been. To, I mean, it's not the same without my dad there, but. I don't want the town of Netherlands to be morphed into a veil or that's extreme, but. That's the other end of it. It, I'm here just to learn what's going on, how these changes happen. Because as you're probably aware, Jesse has the warehouse to the east. And he has ideas and plans, but. You know, we don't know what will or will not come with. What he wants to do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that input. You know, right now it's not allowed for residential housing to be built as it's currently zoned. Everything that's in there was there prior to the zoning, uh, being enacted. As industrial zone. So there would need to be a change in zoning, uh, for any kind of housing or. Uh, you know, to be built right now would have to be industrial use and the uses that were listed before. Um, and we're kind of figuring it out right now. We're kind of looking at what, you know, would be best for the town. But of course, you know, the property owners. You know, ha- have some say so and, and how that's going to be, be done. And we appreciate your feedback on that. And so you're, you're saying you would prefer it not be used if you, that was sold, not be used for housing?
No, I'm, um, there's three other siblings that, or at least two other sisters, because the way it's split up. My brother only has that concrete building and the land around it. The warehouse has a lease with an option to purchase. That is right now just a contract. It's earmarked, so to speak, for Jesse. I think the town with all the input and your. Guidance is probably going to be what will determine is best for the town.
Commissioner Di, in your, in your dreams, what would you like to see happen with it?
Um, this is Greta from the Myerton's family, the owners of the property. And I think that would be a family discussion, not for me to speak for all the others.
That's very.
I didn't know I'd be speaking. I was just coming to listen and learn.
So very fair. I appreciate your position.
Okay, thank you.
So what would have to happen is if, if that is sold to somebody who wanted to use it. Other than what it, you know, as industrial, you know, for manufacturing or something that it's currently zoned for, they would need to come and request a zoning change. And go through that process. And then, you know, we, it would end up back here before the planning commission and then go before the B O T. Uh, for a vote on whether or not they wanted to make a change. Last month, when we discussed that. There was more immediate that the burned out house structure at nineteen Wolf tongue there, um, was the main one we were talking about is how that could be. Basically it was said, hey, until we could figure out a way to rebuild housing there, we don't want to commit to purchasing it and the expense of tearing it down. But was how I understood it to be. And so we were looking at ways that we could make that. A usable piece of property for housing. And some of the things we talked about were, we're changing the use of, uh, adding additional use to. The industrial zone, which was, uh, in my opinion, I think most people were against that. Uh, and it was mostly recommended that we look at carving out a small section with the residential houses. Uh, in it to be used for, so that that could be rebuilt as, as a residential house. But all of this is still open for discussion right now. Nicole?
Yeah. And, you know, just as a refresher for all of us and Jennifer, I might have to pull on you here. It's six months passed, so it technically reverts back to, um, industrial.
It was industrial all along, but it no longer has the laudability of that, um, non-conforming use.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, is that it's, it's, it has no longer the ability to have residential use on it. Correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Uh, yes, that's correct. It can't rebuild the non-conforming structure, um, because the six months has passed.
And one of the, and one of the things that you had articulated at that last meeting was oftentimes code creates those contingencies or those timeframes so that it will revert back to its original use, because a lot of these are non-conforming lots. Correct?
Sorry, you're on. The intent with any non-conformity is that at some point you want to get it to be conforming. So that's either a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structures. You don't want to allow those uses or structures to continue on indefinitely. Um, I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense because if you have your zoning for industrial and you don't the goal is to get it back to an industrial for those particular properties.
So it's just all those things that we have to consider all together to figure out what we want to be when we grow up.
But, but I wonder, are we, are we constrained by, you know, we don't, we wouldn't want to really go in and say, okay, we're hoping that this could be used for housing. So we want to change the zoning, carve out a piece of it or change the use of industrial and then not have the owners of the property coming forward and saying, this is what we intend or want to do that. I mean, are, are we kind of hamstrung by until we have somebody that comes with a proposal and says, hey, this is what we'd like to do. You know, as Jesse has done, but I haven't, has there been any kind of formal, uh, application? Or I don't even know what the process would be for, is there a rezoning application that, that somebody could present? Britt, is that how that would work?
Um, I believe Attorney Madison said typically we don't do this, but the town does have the right to rezone those with, without that. Maybe, but go ahead.
You can, you, the property owner can come to the town, um, and ask for a rezoning. We did that for, um, Ron Mitchell's lot. That was a rezoning.
That's right.
Yes. So there is a whole process with criteria.
But you could, the town can also initiate. Yes. Like you and the planning commission, like I've worked on projects where we have a future land use map or a list of recommended rezonings as part of a comp plan. And as part of the implementation, they go through that list and they say, okay, we want to do all these rezonings. And then they go through the official, the official process, you know, noticing all the abutters, whatever, all the stuff that's in your code and go through the public hearing, starting with the comp plan recommendation. So I guess what I'm asking is we need something, even if it's really high level language, like explore, explore a rezoning or explore other appropriate uses for the industrial zone. You know, it could be as vague as that if, if you guys are undecided. And then at least there's a placeholder in the comp plan for you to defend a choice, whether it's through a development, like the applicant owner or through a public hearing process to decide later what you, how you want to rezone it. But I want there to be something in the comp plan that at least says, explore changing uses so that there's something to stand on.
Okay. To, to allow for the possibility.
Right. Allow for the possibility, because then you're going to have some kind of criteria that says, is this rezone consistent with the comp plan? And you can say, okay, goal C says that it, we, we did want to explore uh, changing the industrial zone. So there's something in there that you, that's, that, that you can defend that choice.
Well, I, I think that that kind of, it, it answers one question for Roger, who was in a hurry. We should be discussing this until we have somebody who says, hey, we want to change the use of this, you know, and, and all this seemed contingent. What I, what I got from last month was Jesse Severs is interested in this property. If you'll change the zoning, he might buy it so he could rebuild housing. And there's a lot of ifs in there. A lot of you do this, then that, then that. And, you know, I, I don't know that we want to be making changes that are long-term based on that. So I, I don't think we have quite the urgency that, that Roger had talked about and, you know, and I agree. We definitely want to hear from the SE group and get this in there, because this is a big chunk of town property. It would be nice to, to see that, you know, utilized more than it is now in, in one way or another. Either as a viable business or as additional housing or maybe both. You know, maybe we change the use to the point where we can, you know, come up with a compromise for both. But yes, we definitely would like to have the SE group, uh, put that in there, exactly what you said. You, you, you said it right there. We're, we're not going to change the language, vague language that allows you to, to put information in there that says, but let's look at the possibility of, of how we could utilize the industrial zone better, either through rezoning portions of it or changing the use of zoning.
Yeah. Or working with the landowners on their vision, you know, whatever it is.
Initially, this, this is Britt. Initially, this came up as well, because I think the person that was, the buyer that was interested wanted to see if the town had any interest in adding the use by right aspect to the like, um, homes, residential homes being on there versus going through the rezone. Because obviously that's much easier. And so that is why it was brought to you in that setting versus them coming through a rezone. But it sounds like it makes more sense right now, at least possibly not have that. And they would need to come for a rezone, the owner of the property.
And can I just throw that out there? Yeah. Uh, cause again, like all of this has to be looked at, at, in a very strategic global, well, as global as we are. But the public lands, industrial, um, Emmett Hoyle has said directly to me that he wants to make his land on the side of the post office affordable housing. So, you know, there's lots going on and we kind of need to look at all of it together to decide, does it make sense to change anything within the industrial group when we've got options that we can start exploring? So.
I just add to that, like, looking into the future for these residential properties that are longstanding, were something to happen to them and you weren't able to rebuild in six months, it would revert to industrial and you'd be stuck in the same situation as the house that burned down. So it may be to your benefit to, to, to want to rezone as something that would permit residential, either to some form of residential or mixed use or a central business district, just so that's on your radar. Thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate it.
Well, that was really helpful to guide us on this topic and that, that's the end of our three topics.
All right. Well, I would say that for sure, in the absence of somebody coming to the town with a formal presentation on, and saying that they had some urgency. I, I think the timeline of, of using this and looking at this, uh, through the comp plan is appropriate. And it gives us a chance, uh, like trustee Sterling said, to look at the implications for the entire town, the, the overall impacts of what that would be. But I could see that, you know, we, we look forward to your recommendations and yes, residents of the town and, and this board definitely would love to see that utilized, uh, more beneficially for the town and the residents, you know, in some form or another. And any recommendations that the SE group has is, hey, uh, you know, it would make sense for this portion to be, you know, based on topography and, and where it is and, and access to, you know, to utilities to be changed, you know, and/or, or not. Or here is the reason why, if you did change that, it would be a bad idea, because you cut off, you know, these business opportunities, you know, unless you change the available uses, uh, in the industrial. So basically, you know, if you could give us your recommendations based on your experience and looking at that. But yes, it is certainly an underutilized parcel, uh, big chunk of town, uh, that we would love in the future to see utilized better. Any questions, final questions that, uh, anyone, any of the commissioners or the trustee sterling have for the SE group?
Um, this is Commissioner Glasser, and I just think it's important that the property owners that have the residences there know their options as to, as long as the property is used as residence, if they want to revert to light industrial, they can't go back to residential. So I think it's really important that they each know their options on the property that is in that, that, uh, zone. Because we have the ability to rezone that. And I think it's really a, a very important issue for each property owner.
While we have you all here, I just wanted, it doesn't have to be a big discussion, but maybe just a thought from any, anyone, SE group, while we have them and you guys. The issue came up about the use of mining in industrial. And some people don't think that's beneficial for the town. Um, some people might. And I was just curious on your thoughts. Um, it's going to be a discussion that I think it's going to come up and it would be good for town, town staff to just have that, to start working with that. It may not be something that necessarily comes with the comp plan, but it is a discussion I think is going to come up.
Are there active mining applications or is things being considered at the moment or no?
No.
No, not right now. I don't know if John wants to say anything further on that.
I think what we've heard is concern that it's in the use table and where it is in town in its proximity to residential and all these things. And how that could impact just everything in town, essentially in the, in the creek and everything else. And so that was where the question came from, I believe.
Okay.
And is that currently listed as used by right?
Yes.
Cause it's industrial. I, I see.
It's in the table.
So there's the concern of pollution, the impact, all the different things.
Yeah. If it's used by right, you know, if somebody does buy it, they could very well put a mining operation. I, um, so this, yeah, this is something I was going to bring up at one point or another. I have an appetite to remove it. I don't think it would be popular at all within our community. If, you know, somebody came in saying they're going to put a mining operation, you know, it'd be pick forks and all kinds of things, pitchforks.
Right.
So, so yeah, so I, I would have a, an appetite to have that discussion.
I'm seeing it as by review at this point. I could, this.
Is it all mining operations?
This is, this says, uh, processing of minerals and ores at the rate of more than a hundred tons per day with review. So we can still totally have the discussion and just, I don't think that it's.
But I guess the question, yeah, the question is like, is that appropriate within your town borders at all? Or, you know, maybe there's potentially areas where it's appropriate within the county up where the, there's historic mines, but like within the town borders.
There was a, a mining operation there, like way, way, way back.
Right.
So it's, yeah. So it's just sort of inherited.
Right. But it's, so in Ludville, it's really interesting with the price of minerals going up. There's a bunch of historic mines that have been reopened. I just ran by one the other day and I was like, huh, they reopened that one because with the cost of minerals, you know, it's worth, worth the effort. Or even, you know, or different technologies to be able to process materials to look for, you know, trace levels of certain metals is like still financially feasible. So I think you do want to, you know, think hard about, about it, about where it's appropriate. Cause there's been a lot of strife in our community about reopening some of these mines, which are now on areas where people are used to recreating for the last 30, 40 years.
Yep. Historically, there's a reason why Linda might want to say, but, but what I try to be brief, because this has kind of come up over the years and, um, I think it all started, uh, well, of course, this is historically there, but the chairman of the planning commission, back in 1980, when they did the zoning and when that all got written, he owned that property and. So that's, well, that, that's how most of the property got kind of divided up. What it was, because the board of trustees, like, you know, without going into detail, you can see exactly where someone owned a car repair shop, someone owned a bar and someone owned a restaurant. You know, up at the turnoff Eldora. But the point is then I think, around two, it was early 2000, we actually redid chapter 16. And I remember working with, um, Bill Martin and we thought that that was actually historical, kind of neat to have that in chapter 16. So we had even discussion about removing the mining, but it was just Netherlands. It was a historical thing. But certainly as the discussion and the times change, yes, we absolutely would not want a working mill or even a, uh, a processing thing or a storage area where trucks were coming in. So I think absolutely we need to move. And here I go again. I don't know that we certainly could put it in the, comp plan, but I think it's something that we could actually move ahead, just as the attorney said. The, the town is allowed to move ahead if they have good reasons and good, uh, documentation to justify a move. So, uh, but it, it was just purely historical, uh, statement. I mean, the Wolf tongue, I mean, everything about it or square. I mean, that's part of our heritage and that's how it was just left there. But maybe the time has come that we need to put up a billboard and say, or something, you know, we still want to keep that heritage, but we certainly don't want, you know, lots of, uh, trucks and things processing also.
I think the environmental hazard alone warrants the removal of that use.
Britt, can we find out for sure if that's a special review? Oh, it is. Okay.
It is. Yes.
So if that's the case, then we have a say so, you know, and, and, you know, it's not used by right. So maybe there isn't the urgency to change it, but it's certainly something that we could eliminate and, and add to it as an agenda item. You know, and as a trustee, you know, you, you carry some weight. So if that's something you want us to, to look at, you know, eliminating, you know, we could certainly look at that.
Yeah. I think there would definitely be appetite for that, because all of this is happening, the comprehensive plan, all of our strategy moving forward. I think it would be totally fine.
Yeah. Be surprised if there wasn't widespread support for removal of industrial.
Yeah. And I think you, you know, you said it right, Roger. It's like, we want to protect our environment and we want to have the right uses in. We don't want to forget our historical heritage, you know, for someone to come in there and to preserve that building as much as possible or take the boards and reuse them. So, you know, like that I think would be super cool, but yeah. We're just not down with having the mining happening.
And I have to agree with what Roger said. It was based mainly on the historical end of that, because all of that was, people that worked on, on the mill, lived in that area. And so I think that was where it was geared. It would be historical. They wouldn't not be forgotten.
Okay. We don't want to keep the SE group people here all night. So do you have everything you need from us?
Yeah, this has been really helpful for us to get started on the plan. And I think what I'd like to report back to you all is, um, what we talked about at the top of the meeting is like maybe a three or four month timeline breakdown of when we can expect, when we can, when you can expect us to start giving you material. So, you know, we're not gone for three months and then all of a sudden we drop this huge document at your feet that you don't, that you have to review. So we'll kind of work on those interim, an interim review timeline. We'll, we'll work on that with Britt and Jonathan.
Well, if you're going to come see us in September, following the every other month, it would be great if we even just had, hey, here, here's the, the, the rough, rough outline, you know, with, with, with our potential goals, you know, and let's have some feedback there. So you can get some, some, you know, information from us. Doesn't have to, you know, have a big professional written out, you know, just an outline, just like what's presented tonight would be great.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Yeah. And thank you, Jennifer, for joining and giving us all a little bit of a primer on some of the annexation policy stuff. That was really helpful. Bye.
Great. We'll see you. Bye, guys.
All right. That was a pretty good, long discussion item. Do we, so we want to move on now to information items and, uh, we had a request for a brief, let hit the highlights, uh, town staff report. Are you giving that? Oh, you are.
I guess so. I didn't look over all of them. I guess so. I didn't look over all of them. Uh, well, in my world, I can go over that. Um, we, I don't remember, I don't think we had received this when I was at the last meeting, but we received. Um, we got the LPC housing coordinator grant that we will be sharing with Lyons. Um, so we will, they will have a, a part-time, we will have them part-time. That's amazing in my world because housing is a lot, um, a lot of learning still.
Before you move on, what's the role of that housing coordinator?
They will be doing housing only. So, um, really looking into the funding that we could be using for affordable housing. Um, helping like with the discussions that I'm current, you know, that I have with affordable developers. Um, now we'll have all this information, town properties. I'm really setting that foundation for them. Um, and just keeping really Jonathan and I and the town up to speed on, you know, what can we go for? How can we make it more enticing, things like that? So, and that will be shared with Lyons. There'll be an actual employee um, shared between us both. Um, we also, um, have the, what is it? The LPC grant with Gilpin and Lyons for the, what is that again specifically called?
Yeah, it's for the multi-territorial housing authority.
I, I'm sorry. Can you tell us what LPC stands for?
Local planning grant or capacity grant.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. Sorry, they, I get confused between them both because they're both LPC. Um, that, uh, they had applications that were set to end on the eighteenth, but they only received one. So it looks like that's going to be extended and a little bit of outreach is going to need to be done there. Um, so that is planned to continue. Um, let's see. We're extending the deadline on the PC application as well, um, or to be decided. Uh, but we just received one application today and it's technically after deadline. So that's going to have to be extended regardless. Um, and probably more outreach done there.
Do you have a new dead, deadline on that?
I'm waiting for Mayor Billy on that. Um, so I will get you one, but share it to anyone you think might have interest. Yeah, I sent out an email. If you'd like me to send that information again to forward to anyone or you have anyone that might be interested, feel free to send them my way.
If you would send that out with the new, whatever the deadline up, up being, and I'll forward that on to the three or four people I'm browbeating into trying to join the planning commission.
Absolutely. Um, okay, I'm just running through these real quick. Um, Jonathan, is there anything you know?
Jonathan.
Yeah.
Uh, so I read in the paper that we're kind of having a pause on the paid parking. Can you give us a little update, a little more information on what's, what's happening with that?
Sure. That was the, my first aim for the board. Um, we, with Miranda leaving when she did, Britt had to take on quite a few roles here. And she had a really good job building a program and getting everything kind of across the finish line. So we have a really good structure for how it should work. But in the first, it was actually the first meeting I attended before I was even hired. Um, we had some conversation about making sure that we kind of smooth the path for employees and residents to make sure everybody understands what's happening. Um, I met with Interstate, which I have worked with Interstate for like six years in Idaho Springs about the rollout. And as we're kind of talking, we identified some concerns that we had about the abbreviated timeline we would have to do it in the original window we had talked about. We weren't going to be able to get a full season of data that would show us kind of the trends of how it's used. And we would have to abbreviate some of the processes, which would make it more difficult in the community. And the goal of this program would be to make it as easy for community people as possible. We don't want to impact people who, who live and work here. We want to just kind of make sure that we're managing the flow of, of parking um, from visitors and making sure that people don't use it just to park all day and, and all that kind of good stuff. So in that conversation with Interstate, we thought maybe the better way to go would be to take just a little bit more time, make sure the community piece is all taken care of, all the signage is correct. We have time to get a good, you know, all the, the equipment we need in the website we need to make it run. And then we can run the program in the same trial capacity and really get a good feel for how it impacts people here and then like what the actual revenue producing potential of it is and whether or not that actually fixes the problem. Because the problem is making sure that we have parking capacity for people to visit businesses. And so when we talked about the, at the board, at the last board meeting, I think the board was generally supportive of that. So I think what the plan would be is we roll out the program. Britt and I have a conversation with Interstate tomorrow to just kind of talk about making sure we've got all the I's dotted, T's crossed. We're going to talk to all the people we need to talk to, make sure everybody has what they need. So it doesn't, you know, cause problems and there's no questions in the community. And then we'll try the same kind of rollout window that we had thought about this summer. That could be, it could work effectively in the winter time too, when people are coming to Eldora. So we could do something like that. Um, it just depends on when everything's ready, but then we'd come back to the board, turn it on, try it out, get the data we need about the parking to determine whether it works. And the other thing we can do as we're working on this is kind of identify what, what trends are as people are going, like how it impacts residential areas. If it does, if we need to identify more places people can park. Um, so I think that ultimately all we're really doing is trying to make sure we get the, we get it right the first time. So it doesn't, it doesn't um, create any kind of undue stress for anybody. We don't create problems for people. We're also going to do some business outreach and make sure all the business owners have good, um, plans for their employees and nobody feels unsafe or anything like that. And that's something we can do. Um, I have helped roll out this program in four different cities, like a similar version. And so this is just gives us an opportunity to make sure that we can follow the best practices we know from that work.
I will tell you from personal experience and talking to two neighbors, the community outreach program is not working. They do not understand how it's going to work. They think town residents are going to have to pay. Uh, so I, I encourage you to utilize social media and the paper and put out some kind of an information. You know, be, before, like well before, you know, at least a couple of months before we start actually having people have to pay for this. You know, my, my next couple of neighbors, uh, up was, was, you know, saying, you know, what's this going to be? And I'm seeing little signs that say, you know, QR code is going to be, you know, charged for soon and, and how is this going to work? And I said, well, we got the right guy because he's rolled this out. Uh, so are, are we looking at a, a timeline of next year now or are we just a delay of a few months or?
Could be. It depends on where we're at. And I think that that's something that is a little bit in flux right now. It's important for me to roll this out correctly. We've, I've done it. The places that I primarily worked on was here or in Idaho Springs, I'm sorry. Uh, Green Mountain Falls, a little bit of work in Golden and a little bit when Morrison was rolling it out as well. And we found that better, you know, you just have to have really clear communication with people. And it's not all, you know, you have to kind of go to people a lot of the time. So that's something that I agree with you is very important and I want to make sure that piece is right. Ideally, what we would have is we'd have everybody in the community taken care of, all that kind of stuff done. So when we turn the parking on for revenue producing, really the only people who are kind of going through that process is just people who are visiting and those are a lot easier to handle. But some of the things that, that communities do, and it could be different here is, you know, in a lot of communities, residents don't end up actually getting citations. What they do is get, um, help registering for their, their vehicles and making sure things are working. So a lot of times they might receive a citation and an interstate will work with them and then take it off as soon as they've got that registration corrected. So we, this program was designed specifically to be community friendly, but it's scary because of what it is. And so what really has to happen is, you know, a million one-on-one conversations where you build the trust and the best way to build that trust is not to have significant issues in the rollout. And so I think what we're going to do is we're going to kind of bypass that problem. Make sure everybody understands the benefit to them and then we'll, we'll go for the, the other piece.
All right. I will look for, uh, something in the paper outlining how, how that's going to work. And I'm sure that a lot of other, uh, neighbors and residents will. Cause, cause I've, you know, had a lot of people say, well, what if I live just outside of town and I come and this is my community too. You know, so those kind of, you know, think about all the questions you might have or the things that are, people are coming in, uh, to town hall with and, and try and answer as many of those.
Yeah, I did want to make this note. Tell your neighbors, any signage you're seeing right now is Ron Mitchell's private signage. I think it will be very obvious when it is towns, or I would like to make sure it is, that it's Town of Netherland paid parking. Anything you're seeing or any payments that are happening are for Ron's law on one hundred East First. It is not town associated at all. As there has been that confusion, so I've had to make that clarification. But if you're seeing signage right now, it is not the Town of Netherland.
Okay. Well, and I, and I told them that it's, it's just first street in the visitor, uh, lot right now. So, you know, that, that's good. But I, I will happily get with you because I presented three times to the Board of Trustees, uh, on the parking plan. I was the subcommittee, uh, head of the subcommittee. Lyndon and I worked on that, uh, many, many hours, coming up with, with some, uh, actionable areas, uh, to expand parking on. And so that already exists and I'll be happy to come and, uh, give my pitch again to anybody who listens.
I'd love to meet with you on that. You know, it's kind of funny. Sometimes you become expert in certain things you never thought you would. And for me, parking is something that's in that world. And I would love to know local context of that from anybody. So I just want to have an open door. I think Britt feels the same way that we want to make sure that if there's things we need to consider or things that need to change, or maybe just, um, things we might think might become a problem. Like one thing that does happen is sometimes if you have a paid parking area, people will circle and find free. So you have to kind of protect residential parking areas as well. And that might be something we need to look at too. So any ideas of, of any kind are helpful. And I think we would want to make sure that we, we implement that.
Great, great. And, and I think the key, I'll just, the key that you said of, okay. And if you got that ticket because you didn't get registered in time, you're going to get a little bit of grace here. You're, and we're going to help you get registered and figure it out, you know, but, you know, i- if you don't go through that process, then you get a ticket, you know? I mean, that's how it works.
It's one of the nice things about a small town is you can, you can make that work with the people in the community. So I think that's something that we'd want to make sure is, is correct.
And I think we still have the presentation that, that we could always forward that to you, the presentation we gave to the board.
I do. Yeah, I'm happy to share that with them.
I, I, I'll come and, uh, sit down with you and give you my, my, my twenty minute pitch that I gave to the, or ten minute pitch to the BOT, uh, several times. And I, I, I think that there's some low hanging fruit that, that we could actually, you know, that will not require a lot of resources to, for example, the Ned gravel race. Boy, wouldn't it have been great to have additional parking down? Uh, you know, Lakeview Drive there from rodeo court to the end where we could just say, hey, here, here, pardon me, here, here, here's an additional seventy-five spots for all you out of towners that you can come park and, and walk over. And, you know, a, a, and, and the other thing I don't understand is why people are so frustrated by the idea, you know, we're talking about signage. Everything that we, we talked about was, had other components to it. Well, signage saying, okay, if you're willing to walk three blocks, two blocks, you know, here's some free parking for you. You know, you can go down here and go to the church. You can go, you know, these X, these six different spots, you know, if you're willing to get a lack, exercise in. So, okay. Thank you very much. And, and I, I don't know, do you, is there anything else you guys wanted to present?
Um, uh, I guess I'll just plug in tips, um, is out for bid. Um, that is the, um, new sidewalks from RTD to town hall up to Jefferson, Jefferson. So that went out. Um, we are still, uh, let's see. There was that and I also wanted to mention, um, I see here on Andrew's report, it looks like town applied for funding through Colorado Water Plan Grants on July first. Thanks to Denali Water Consultants for the wa- well expert, well exploration at the town's water intake property. So just something I noted here. Um, also the rate study was approved by the Board of Trustees in June and work will be kicking off soon.
I, I, I read that portion of the report there and I also would be interested in knowing how close we are along with the, the BOT. You know, when Andrew said he would have to come back and say, here's how close we are to capacity, to needing to do that expansion. I, I think the planning commission, you know, for infrastructure purposes would, would love, when that actually comes out, we don't always hear from people in utilities. But, you know, that'd be great to know, you know, how, how close are we to capacity? Cause that informs our thinking for annexation, for additional builds, you know, multi-family housing, all those things, you know, if we're very close or, you know, we've got, you know, excess capacity. Okay.
Yep.
Very much. Anything else?
No, just thank you. And I'd just like to make sure everyone knows I'm, my door is open. I'm trying to meet people and build relationships right now and get the context that you have and just make sure I'm, I'm working in that direction. So I'd love to have one-on-ones with anyone in the public who's listening or any of you that would like to meet with me and anytime. I'm just, um, right over there at town hall. So.
Fantastic. I know when Steve gets back in town, uh, we're going to come venge your. Okay. Uh, any other business?
Yes. Um, we received an email at some point last month, I believe, um, regarding the condition of the Gillespie House. And I did go over and meet with Lee and take a look around. From my initial, um, look, I really can validate her concerns. I did go over also with some visitors that I, family visitors that were in their eighties. One was in a wheelchair and just kind of wanted to test out how it would be to bring her over. Um, and it was, it was really like precarious. So I don't, I'm no expert, but I do think if there's any way to put on our radar that we might want to have that assessed. There were two priorities I noted. One was the electrical. Um, like Lee had me try to turn the lights on, you know, and it was for my force, it really took quite an effort to get the lights on. Um, there was an issue with the lock. There's no lock on the bathroom door. Um, so basically staff have to like monitor that if, if a visitor wants to use the restroom. And then the other area was the deck kind of area to get into the house. I, I came up with ideas just from fundraising, awareness, things that we could do privately as citizens to try to raise awareness and support. But I also was hoping that maybe we could discuss town, county, part, I don't know, historic society. I, I don't even know where to start, but I just wanted to put it on our radar. Part of the Gillespie House, it is town-owned property. And I don't know if the historical society has approached the town for any funding. I've been trying to encourage them to do that. Um, because there is, I agree with you, there's a desperate need for, it is a liability what we're seeing there right now. And we're trying to encourage, um, people to go up to the Gillespie House from the Miners Museum. But if the condition just getting there is, is pretty precarious.
Does it have historical designation?
I think the house does, yes.
Okay.
And it is part of the area historical society, but the property itself is town-owned.
I'd be interested, maybe I'll just make note of it, maybe working that into our strategic goals. Um, because we wouldn't want anything unsafe happening. We looked into historical designation for town hall. Um, as well, you know, to try to get funding dollars in order to make the repairs. So I'm, I'll just make note of that.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like maybe you could go back to them and ask them to write something up formally to present. Okay. Yeah. Okay. That, that seems like the, the place to start.
Did you say, I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. Did you say there was a structural assessment or there was not one yet?
I don't believe there's been any professional assessment. I did ask that of Lee and I, I think it's warranted. But I don't believe, um, a professional assessment has been conducted.
Okay, thank you.
C- certainly, you know, with them to, you know, outline some requests and what they're looking for would be good. You know, so that we could get it before the Board of Trustees. I don't know that the planning commission really has a role in, in that. But, you know, it's a small town, so you bend every year that you can, right? Okay. Any other business? I would entertain a motion. Second to.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you.